We're in session.
Yes.
Before we start our meeting, I'd like to have a moment of silent prayer in memory of Dora Roden, mother and mother-in-law. So we'll bow our heads for a minute. Thank you. Let's see, could I get the town clerk to read the items on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, those items are, um, letter A, Board of Aldermen's Meeting Minutes of January the 4th, 2021, the agenda session meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve the item on the consent agenda?
I don't need that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to welcome our guests tonight and those online with us too. We're glad to have you here. Let's see, we have an annual audit review. Becky Loy?
She's online.
Ms. Loy?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, Mary Tolly. Board members, thank you all so much for allowing me to come tonight and present to you. We have completed the audit, I'm very excited to say, and you did get an unmodified opinion. So we're very excited about that, very excited to be able to have this completed for you. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do the audit this year. As you know, we've changed the format a little bit with Patricia and her firm doing the work and the financial statements and our firm coming in and auditing. And so we appreciate that. That is the accounting environment these days, and so we appreciate you allowing us to be a part of your financial team. So you have in front of you, hopefully, a summary. And I will, um, let's see here, see if I can bring that up. Yes, so you'll see in front of you that you have a, you probably have this in paper format as well, but this is the summary that you all have been using. And so I just want to hit the highlights for you and let you know what your financial position looks like. And so as you see the first bullet point, you have assets in excess of liabilities of 21 million. So the town is in good financial shape and has a good amount of net position. The increase in that position was a million and a half. Last year it was a million two, so still very comparable, but a little better this year. The governmental funds were a million and the water and sewer and stormwater were half a million. So that did change what fund produced the most amount of excess did change a little bit last year for the governmental funds. It was a million five. So that has gone down a little bit, but I think that was what was budgeted and what was expected. So the third bullet down is actually your governmental fund balance for the modified, which is 7.4 million. Now, modified is budgetary. That's the easiest way to understand what the difference between modified is and full accrual. Your net position is full accrual. That's all of your liabilities and all of your assets, including the long-term. Modified doesn't include the long-term, and that's why it's just budgetary. It's cash in and cash out. So out of the 7.4 million, you actually have reserved of a million six. And so that's reserved for Powell Bill and the forfeiture fund. You also reserve all the receivables until you receive them in cash. So that's also part of that 1.6 million. So in the end, from, on the modified basis, you have 5.7 in your unreserved fund balance, 5.7 million. Last year was 4.8. So very good increase in that unreserved fund balance. Another point, the last bullet point, is just to bring out that your debt did go up. You had a new loan of 768,000. That's offset by payments of 150,000. So your debt is a little bit higher than it was last year. Still very low. So good position as far as your debt's concerned. So the chart at the bottom of this page is a little overwhelming. There's a lot of numbers here, and so we're not going to go over all those numbers. But you will, I just want to bring it to your attention that all of these numbers do represent the activity for the town. So you've got the columns for governmental, and then you have the columns for the business type. And so it is split in that so that you can see which, what the funds are doing. So your total assets for the governmental funds are 16 million, and the water and sewer funds, almost nine million. So your total assets are 25 million. So again, very strong. The next section is your liabilities, and the total is 3.6 million. So that includes your retirement liabilities and obligations. That includes the debt obligations that you have. So again, that's a pretty low amount of liabilities. And so that's where you get the 21 million in total net position. 13 million is for your general fund, and eight million is for your water, sewer, stormwater funds. And that includes capital assets. Okay? So your capital assets account for quite a big portion, of course, of your net assets. A total of almost 12 million of that 25, 21 million is for capital assets, which would be expected. So if we look at the next page, the next page is, the chart is the change in net position. So this is the revenue minus expense. And so when we look at the revenue minus expense, you will see that, again, it changed a little bit. You can see the 2020 compared to the 2019 changed a little bit in the makeup, but still very strong. So your governmental funds, your general fund had eight million. That's a $353,000 increase from last year, and surprisingly, that increase is in your local option sales tax. And so even though we're in this COVID environment, you still had an increase in the tax there. And so good, strong revenue. We don't know what 2021 will look like, but hopefully we'll be able to recover some as we go forward through the year. Your water and sewer is the next column, and again, that's an increase also. So your total revenue in your water and sewer and stormwater funds is 14, I'm sorry, 4,014,000. That's an increase of 236,000. A lot of that increase is due to the increase in the rate, and so that is what helped produce some of that increase. So revenue looks very good. So we go down to the expenditures section. Your expenditures for the governmental activities was 7 million. That's an increase over last year. The three single items, the largest items of increase were personnel. You had several positions that were filled, and so personnel was 253,000. Retirement was 215. So that's your obligation for future retirement. That was an increase of 215. And then your compensated absences are 45,000. That's where most of the increase was, and then the rest of it was in different categories as you go through all the expenses. And then the middle column, your water and sewer fund, is total expenses of 3.0, almost 3.5 million. So that's actually quite a big decrease, and some of that is because of the decrease in the water treatment, water and sewer treatment for the fund. It was a decrease of 295,000. So this number is, you know, you're paying whatever you're charged, and of course, that can fluctuate based on the weather. If there's, if it's very wet, you're going to pay more to have the treatment done. So that, you actually paid almost $300,000 less for that this year than you did last year. So that was a nice decrease. And when you put those together, you actually had a much stronger end result in your water and sewer fund. You actually had almost over half a million dollars in excess. And last year, you had a deficit of 270,000. And we know that can be spending on equipment or whatever is needed for the year, but it is nice to see that being a nice positive number there. And so when we look at the general fund, you'll see that the general fund, the eight million minus the seven million in expenditures yields of $1 million excess of revenue over expense. So it's not quite as high as last year's was. Last year was a million five, but these were all budgeted things that needed to be done, expenditures that were expected to be spent. So very strong when you look at the revenue minus expense. It's 1.5 million. Last year was 1.2 million. So it's a little bit different makeup, but it's still a very good, strong year considering the environment that we're in and the changes that have had to take place and all of the rules and regulations that we have had to follow. You know, we still have, you still ended up with a pretty good year. And so that is very positive when we look at the results in your activity. Page three is, I'm just going to keep going to the charts because that is, that is going to be where we can see, and for some reason, here we go. Okay. So page three is your capital assets. A lot of the expenditure is going to be around capital assets. What do you have to do? What do you have to buy to provide the service that you provide? And so you have eight million in your governmental fund, 8.2 million in capital assets, and that increased by a million two. You actually spent about a million five, and then we subtract depreciation off of that of about a half a million. So the expenditures were most significantly for the streets, infrastructure there and improvement there, and then vehicles. I think you had three police vehicles, a couple trucks, the pumper truck being the most expensive one. And so that is where most of that increase came from. When you look at the business type activities, it actually went down, and that's because of depreciation. So you really didn't have a significant amount of equipment purchased in the business type activities. And so 8.2 is your total for the governmental funds, 4.7 is a total for the business, water and sewer funds, for a total of almost 13 million in capital assets. Page four is just selected information, and I'm not going to go over all these numbers, but I wanted to provide those to you so that you would have them. But you know, the most important number is always the cash. What's the cash amount? And so for your governmental funds, your cash is almost at 6 million, and that's almost a $900,000 increase. And that's because of the activity that was for the year. You actually had a positive activity, and so that, of course, is going to generate the cash. As you go on down, these other, the other numbers there are just differences between this year and last year, just timing of when payments are made and received. Restricted cash, I wanted to let you know what that was. 767,000, that's your Powell Bill and your forfeiture fund. Capital assets, we already, we already went over that. Long-term liabilities, your long-term liabilities are 2.8 million compared to 1.6 million last year. So there's quite a bit of increase there. That increase is because of the new debt for the truck, 768,000. And then you did have an increase in the retirement expenditures for future retirement that you're going to pay. So that actually is a million, about a million and a half in total at this, as of June 30th. That is the obligation, retirement obligation is a million and a half. So that's the biggest part of that. And so we get back down to the 4.6 in unrestricted net assets. And now, remember I told you earlier that the fund balance was 5.7? And so the difference between those two numbers, the budgetary number and this full accrual number, is the amount of debt that you have. That's long-term. And so that's where that difference comes in. The business type, you have cash and cash equivalents of 3 million. And again, that was a good increase over last year due to the revenue being higher than the expense. You do also have restricted cash in your water and sewer fund of 166,000. And that's made up of deposits, water and sewer deposits, and then your capital reserve fund that you're required to put back. And so as you go down through these numbers, again, most of this is just timing differences of amounts, payables that are due. You don't really have significant amounts of debt or long-term liabilities in your water and sewer fund, so that's good. And then we come down to your unrestricted net assets of three and a half million, increase of 500,000. So again, your financial activity has been very good for the year, and I think has followed along what your expectation would have been. Do you all have any questions on the numbers, and I'll try to answer those?
Any questions from members of the board?
I do have a couple more things to go over, so if you'll give me another few minutes, I'll be able to finish for you.
Make it quick.
Okay, I will. You have a letter in your financial statement that is based, is talking about your internal controls, and I just wanted to let you know that we did not find any compliance issues, and we did not find any deficiencies. We had no suspicions of fraud. We did not have any difficulties doing the audit. We audit under governmental auditing standards, and you do apply the GAAP accounting method. And so you are, from the audit perspective, we look at your policies and procedures to make sure that you have the right ones in place and that they're operating as you, as a board, would expect them to. And we did not find any problems in that. So we're very happy to report that. And that's all I have. So I, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to be a part of your financial team and to do the audit for you. And if you, as a board, ever have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Be glad to try to answer those for you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? If you look to the future, are there any concerns that you may have that our board should address?
No, you know, we've had quite a few challenges this year. So the great thing about being where we are right today is that we've made it through a lot of those challenges and figured out how to modify. One of the concerns that we had as auditors was, are you still protecting your cash? Are you still following procedures to, when people can't come in and when people are not doing their jobs the way they normally would have been doing them? And I've been very pleased to report on all of my units that the reactions from the accounting teams have been very good. Everybody has continued to think about policy and procedure and protecting the financial assets of the town. And so that is the case for you as well. And so going forward, I feel like the one thing that we have to be, continue to be diligent about is just reacting to COVID and what those procedures are, and don't cut out procedures. Make sure you still have procedures in place that protect the assets of the town. That's really the biggest thing right now. There have been a lot of things that were put in place to be followed and to be applied and implemented in the next few years, but most of those have been delayed. So we don't have to deal with those for another couple of years. I'm thankful to say we can just deal with COVID and be able to move through that. And there's nothing out there that I'm concerned about at this point.
Davis has a question.
Thank you, Becky. Just appreciate that overview. That was a very good review of where we stand. And I appreciate you breaking it out in the manner that you did. I just had a quick question as we went through the part about our retirement obligation. And this may not be something that you can answer, but it seemed like last year or the year before, we got a notice saying how much we would have to, how much that was going to increase over the next couple of years. And it seemed like it was in that 10 to 12% range. Do you happen to know what that figure is? And am I close in being right there?
I do not know, but I do not know for a fact, but I believe you are right that that is about what it has been. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to reach over here and pick up last year's financial statement so that I can look at that.
Right.
And see if I can get some comparative here.
And I believe that came from the, from the state or somebody gave us what the figures were going to be.
It would have.
Okay.
An increase in 1.2% every year for the past couple of years.
I'm sorry, so it's increased 1.2% each year over the last couple of years?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's much lower than what I thought it was going to be. Okay.
It will be up close to 11 to 12% by the time they finish all of the increases.
Thank you, Missy. That's, that's what, that's the figure I was remembering. So it's going to be 1.2 over a period of time, and then the cumulative was going to be around 12%.
Yes.
Great.
To put it in a little more perspective, in your balance as of June 30, 18, was 671,000. Your balance today is almost 1.2. So there is, it has increased significantly over the last three years. Your LEO obligation has gone down, but that is the actual pension, the local government employees' retirement amount. So you're at 1.2 million for that obligation.
Okay. Thank you, Becky. I appreciate it.
Other questions from board members? If not, thank you so much, Ms. Loy. We appreciate the very thorough report.
You're very welcome. Y'all have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Let's move on. I think we've got a couple of recognition of some officers. Chief Blackwelder?
Good evening, everybody. How are you? First of all, I just want to thank you for allowing me to be here. Seems like last month, maybe I was here again with some awards. And just a little backstory, a little history on this particular award. The North Carolina Criminal Justice Training and Standards Commission established these law enforcement certificates, and it was in an effort to recognize dedicated officers' level of competence and to foster interest in college education and professional development. Under the program, dedicated officers have the ability to get this recognition through their training, their on-the-job experience, and for their formal education. And the commission basically takes those three facets and determines eligibility for the certificates. And there are levels. There are basic, intermediate, and the most coveted, I think, is the advanced certificate. Today, we have two officers that we would like to recognize. I'm going to start with Sergeant Kedrick King. For those that don't know Kedrick, he is a sergeant on A Platoon. Won't be embarrassed if I get that wrong. He's on A Platoon. He has been with the department for about three and a half years. Prior to that, he came from the University Police Department, where he served as sergeant there. He has about nine years total experience. And Kedrick also has about 600 hours of training hours aside from our mandatory training. And we're proud to say that just last year, he obtained his master's degree. So without further ado, Kedrick, congratulations on this. We're very, we're very proud when our officers get these awards. Next up, yes?
Do you want to take a picture with the seal in the back?
Yeah, turn this way and let Mr. Soder get one too.
I got it.
Well, I should put my mask on, I guess. I'm close to him. I apologize. In your comfort zone.
Congratulations, man. That's awesome.
Next up is Robert Lovett. This, Robert's also a sergeant with us. He was, at one time, acting lieutenant before we actually incorporated our sergeants. Robert's been with us for about five and a half years. He served on patrol for a while, and now that we're getting staffing hopefully back, back up to par, he's going to be our university liaison and also part of our, I guess, starting out our COP initiative. He's been really excited about this. He comes to us from Graham over six, almost six years ago, but he has a total of about 20 years. He's worked in a multitude of scopes as K-9 interdiction officer, and he always has a really positive attitude. I always compliment him. You never know what kind of mood he's in. He also has over 1,200 hours of training aside and apart from our mandatory in-service training. So again, Robert, we're very proud that you've accomplished this. And we'll get another photograph, I suppose? Not to say that Kedrick doesn't always have a pleasant attitude either. He's very positive. I don't want to sh-
And truth be told, Kelly was actually the one who inspired me to go after this and get it. So I want to say thank you.
Glad to hear that. I'm smiling. I don't know why.
I know. Why do we do that?
Are you smiling with your eyes?
We've got to get one together.
Yeah, do a, a, together one.
We've got one to post.
Mayor, could you step over just a little? Thank you so much. Okay, I got you.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, when you speak of, you know, the 600 hours and then the 1,200 hours of training, what is that training, the extra training?
Excellent question. So it ranges. Oftentimes, we sit down with our officers and ask what their goals and aspirations are. It may be interdiction training. It may be leadership training, Intox, radar. A lot of, a lot of the training is geared toward the officers' really goals. You know, if they want to get into a leadership position, we make sure they have those. It may be interview and interrogation. It may be homicide investigation. So it is all those extra things that we need to sharpen our tools to keep us sharp for when things do kind of go amiss. CIT training's another one. All of our officers, at this point, we've had some changeovers, so we've got some new folks that just came out of the Basic Academy, who may not have that, but we had at one point, maybe a year ago, 100% crisis intervention training. It also includes, you know, fair and impartial training, racial equity. It just really runs the gamut. It could be anything that our officers find value in, that we at an agency find value in, and just encouraging them to go out and seek it. And I think that has been a really turning point for, or what we've been known for, is getting our officers in those trainings. You go to some agencies and they don't have that opportunity. I know that that was the case for me when I came here from another agency. I spent four years there, maybe got 100 hours, and that included in service. So it's something we really value, and I think our officers do too.
That's awesome. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you all for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's see, let's open the public comment section. Are there any citizens here tonight who would like to make any comments to this board about their wishes and concerns for the town?
Mr. Gary.
Mr. Gary? State your name and where you live and-
My name's Michael Gary. I live at 217 East Summerbell, about, right about over there. I've been in Eagle. I'm resident for close to 30 years. And I've seen a lot of things go on in this town, and I've seen some upsides and downsides. And I've seen where the town has taken some steps forward. What I'm seeing right now is not acceptable. I'm here to issue a concern, a complaint, and look to you to tell me what kind of actions you're going to take. Right now, I have pictures that I took just on the way up here. My neighborhood looks like a trash pit. I live, I work in Chapel Hill. I drive through all the neighborhoods of Chapel Hill. There's more trash in my neighborhood than there are in a square mile in Chapel Hill, and I can't figure out why. Somebody has to be able to tell me or do something about it because it values, one, it's my property. It's my livelihood. It is, from me, it's a nuisance. It's a public and a private nuisance. And I don't want to go that route, but I'm not going to stand for letting my neighborhood get trashed. And I'm happy to sit here and show you the pictures that I took just on the way up here. You'll be appalled at what's out there. I can track it back to probably six houses. And each one of them, when they have parties, it's not solo cups right now because nobody can buy a keg. You can't have that many people in your house. So we're getting cans. And you can follow them from the house, from the yard, where you see 30 in a yard, you can follow them half a mile. Watching the Budweiser keg, or White Claw. Who buys White Claw? I mean, really? Somebody had a special owner or something? I know the house that did it. We all know the house. I know our police officers know where those houses are. They've been to them enough times because I've called on them for noise. It's unacceptable to watch my neighborhood turn into a trash pit. And I want to know what you guys are going to offer to do to resolve this, because I want to see something done. And I'll look for action from you, and from there, I'll decide where my next courses of action are going to be.
When you say trash?
It is trash.
That's beyond trash pickup day.
No, let me show you. You'll be-
But I mean, are our people picking up the trash or just not picking up the trash?
Oh, no. It's, trash is done absolutely perfectly. No, I'm talking about litter.
Okay, you're talking about a yard. Is it usually after parties and things like that, or just always?
Well, let me put it this way. I can walk out on a Friday, come back, Saturday morning, I'm picking up trash. Sunday morning, I'm picking up trash. Monday morning, I'm picking up trash from my yard, from in front of my yard, and all the way around the block. I literally can see all the way around the block, every party that was there. And I've taken pictures one week and gone back the week after, and nobody has made an effort to clean them up. That's not tenable. So something's got to happen. We have a litter ordinance here. I'm not seeing it enforced. That's not tenable either. So I want to see what we can do. It's not something that's hard. It's communication. It's working to find a resolution. I'm here to work. I'll work as a partner. I'll help you, but I want to see something done. I don't want to see my neighborhood go down the tubes. It's my livelihood. If I brought it to your neighborhood, how would you feel? When you walk out on Sunday morning, found beer cans out in your yard, solo cups, trash? Not good. I know you won't. And the worst part is, is there's laws that prevent this. How hard are we going to have to work to get this resolved?
Can I see a couple of those pictures, if you don't mind?
Happy to show them to you. You'll love them.
I'll ask a question, if it's okay, Mayor.
Yeah.
I assume these are students and not-
They're rental houses.
Well, that could be anything, but they're students.
No, they're students.
Students are rent property that are adjacent to your property, right?
No, they're all around the block.
Right, but they're adjacent to your property?
Well, yes. The ones that are right next to my property where you say adjacent, I mean contiguous property.
Well, it's your neighbor.
They're neighbors.
Right.
So that's one.
So my, my question is, obviously, you've obviously complained, you complain. Have those complaints been filed with the department?
I sent one so far to our town management.
Yesterday.
On that. I'm here because I want to do it vocally. I want to make sure that you hear me.
Yeah, I understand, I understand your problem. I guess, question is-
Yes, I have-
Are the right ears being addressed? And I think, I think you're doing this tonight, obviously, out of frustration.
No, I'm doing this to start and lay a foundation.
Well, you're obviously frustrated. You would, I can tell by your tone, and, and I appreciate that. I guess my question is, the university has a vested interest in making sure their students are good neighbors. And those are the kind of conversations that I think they would appreciate here. They obviously are against students not being cordial and being respectful of others.
Well, from the, the law's just gotten better. Our officers are outstanding. They come and break up the parties, and they help us with that. But I mean, I can watch the same house. I watch the people walk in. They've got this new game now that they have a big table. I don't know what it is, but whatever it is. But I see a dozen kids walk in there. Five of them are carrying 24 packs. I watch them walking out, doing this, throwing the can down on the ground, getting in their car, and driving away. I have some real concerns.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, me personally, looking at safety and looking at the integrity of our community. And I do want to work as a partner. We've done this before with the university. We met with the chancellor. So, and the dean, so we've done this.
I walk in that neighborhood, I know exactly what's happening.
So it's not, it's not new. This issue is. The trash issue, this is new. This has gotten out of hand. And you can follow the trail of beer cans to the house and know because there's 20 in the yard. And they don't move. At least, the very least, you can pick them up after you were done with the party.
I, I guess it goes back to landlord's responsibility as well.
That's the other piece to it, because I can tell who the good landlords are. I know those landlords. I know which ones are doing the right thing, and, and in their contracts, they have it listed. And I know that I can reach out, because I have their phone numbers, I can reach out to them and call them and tell them where the issues are. But there are landlords that don't care about anything but the rent. So, and they're in the neighborhood. And it's been recent. I mean, the last five years, we've got more student housing in there. Which is expected. We're close to the school for children, so we're right next to it. I expect it to get more, but not a whole lot more. Not a whole lot more houses. And I don't expect it to turn into a slum either. They're not going to allow it to come into a slum.
I, I know it's not your responsibility to talk to them, but have, have you knocked on the doors of the neighbors that have been doing this, the houses, and to say, "What's going on, guys?"
Let me ask you why. Why would I?
Well-
I'm not the police. I'm not the law enforcement. And I don't need to go out and reprimand somebody who's 23 years old who can't act civilly. So that's not my job, and I have a real bad problem with other things. So I don't want to talk to-
You called the landlord. So you called the landlords a couple of times?
I've talked to the landlords that I know that will be responsible. There are other landlords that I do not call because they don't care. I already know that because I've talked to them over previous years about other issues.
Imagine most of this is on after the weekend.
I'm sorry, what?
Most of this trash is after a weekend.
Uh, well, it's accumulating. So, and this semester's, what's that?
I'd say, or any good weather day.
Yeah. Yeah, this semester's been probably worse because I guess everybody's backed up from not being able to celebrate because of COVID. So now they're breaking loose. But they're breaking loose and throwing it out. No, I don't go to landlords because the few landlords that I did go to, that, that I know that are in those houses, I've talked to them, and the landlords have said, "You've got to talk to the kids." I'm not responsible for going and, you know, taking care of the kids. And I know that even if they came, it's not going to change anything. So it doesn't change with noise. I mean, they have a party one night, they'd like to have a party again. So I don't mind if they have parties, as long as they don't hear them at night. And I'll make calls, and our officers are great at supporting that. What I'm real concerned about is, we've got two things going on. We know that they're having parties. We know that they're trashing the neighborhood. We know that there's a lot of DUI going on. So I've got some concerns. And I'm asking you to step up, tell me what you're going to do about it.
So legally, I mean, I certainly understand your, your anger with that. I would be as well. So I'm sorry you're having to go through that. Legally, what can we do and what discussions do we need to have with the university to try to? Obviously, yes, they're not the landlords, but the students are where the issue is that we're seeing, or allegedly the issue.
Well, it's not allegedly.
I mean-
I, I can tell you that right now, you have a litter law. You have an ordinance. That law, that ordinance is substandard compared to the ordinances of other college towns. It is weak. You're a $20 fine after several warnings. That's a weak ordinance. In Chapel Hill, it's $300 after the second time. So we're talking about places that really commit to doing something for the community. And it took years to get that, by the way, because I was on the city, the planning board. And it took years to get an ordinance that even said litter has a fine. So I know it's baby steps, but we're years behind where other communities are. And I've looked at Pembroke. I looked at Wilmington. I looked at Chapel Hill. I looked at a variety of different universities. Their regulations around littering are way advanced past here. Because of the town, and because the people in Chapel Hill, obviously, have influence. Pembroke's a wealthy area, too. But Wilmington, I was a little surprised. They set the same regulations as Chapel Hill. So they're there. It's just, how are we going to, how are we going to find a good solution that gets students involved, gets them acting like civilized human beings? Because, oh, sorry, acting like they're part of a community, not civilized human beings? Because I'm presuming they are, but they should act like they're part of the community because they're guests here. So again, I'm looking for you guys for action, and I, I also, my profession is in industrial hygienist, but I've done hazardous waste regulations for forever. So I read regulations every day, and I compare regulations from one location to another location to the state regulations. And the state has regulations that go onto littering, too. So there are rules that can be applied. It's just a question of how much commitment does the community have to do it? And I will say this, one last thing, absolutely the last, is when we first met with the university and talked to them, we talked to them about noise and some other issues, parking and some other things like that. And when we did, I talked to my neighbors to get them to come because I had to go to see them. They were afraid to come because they're afraid of the students. They're afraid of recrimination. That's not acceptable. I, I, that's their problem, but they shouldn't be afraid. And there's not many of us left in that neighborhood. There's probably eight families left. But they are literally afraid to come and speak up because they're, I guess they watched that, what is it? Movie with the fraternity house next door? Whatever it was, they, they are nervous about coming out and saying, they're even nervous about calling the police about noise. So, because they're worried about recrimination. I'm not.
So how do we monitor that? Do we have someone that goes around through all the neighborhoods and see if there's trash? I'm sure downtown this area is a lot worse, but in all neighborhoods, they might have that problem.
We do. We have our, our contracted code enforcement, which is, they're contracted at 20 hours a week, so they're part-time. And Kristen does most of the work here in Elon.
And what do they do when you say?
She, she does do, she responds to complaints, so it's, it is very helpful when we're informed about these. So she'll go right out there and take a look, and then she does ride throughs absent of complaints, just to sort of monitor areas that she knows have been problems before. And then there's a great deal of paperwork. And part of what I think is occurring is that there's a lag time between seeing the issue and the warning or notice or violation going out. It is a property infraction. It's, it's a, it's a violation against the property. So what I've asked her to do, she does send to the landlord, because if there are fees, ultimately, it goes to them. It goes to the property owner. But she's also reaching out to whoever's there on site. She'll knock on the door. She'll leave a, a door hanger or some sort of tag, letting them know that this notification has been made. Because that's usually the quickest way to, to get it resolved.
So can I ask a question off the top of that? Two weeks ago, there was a party across the street, 216. This is the one that I sent you the picture of. Oh, I didn't send pictures. I'm sorry. I couldn't attach them to that, but I took pictures of it. A week later, solo cups, the cans, and everything else that was in that yard had not moved. Either that, or they completely reconstructed that scene with exactly the same cans and bottles. So it hasn't, it takes an awful long time to get a response on that.
So it was, this was-
216 Summerbell.
To that specific address that you made. And, and so I've got to delve into this a little bit more to see why this, why it's happening the way it's happening. Kristen sent me the photographs that she took when she was out there, and there was not a, not a piece of trash in sight.
That, that house, it's still there. This is over two weeks ago. The solo cups and stuff are going right in front of the house. They're all on the side on the drive and all across the yard. There's still trash there.
I'll, I'll have to, and I was out there today, and, and, you know, I didn't see it either. So either we're not looking closely enough, we're not seeing either the angles of the house that you're seeing. We, we have to do better. I mean, that, that's, these-
I've got a photo of it right here.
I understand. I understand. I understand. We, we, we have to do better, and we will do better. I had a long discussion with Chief Blackwelder yesterday after I was notified of this by Mr. Gary, and I learned a lot during that discussion, including, unfortunately, I'm not sure how much response from the university we can expect because they don't keep track of what rental houses their students are in.
Student conduct, I mean, just in general, I mean, they're still responsible for their students and the conduct. And I realize students will be partying, I mean-
Kids are kids.
Kids are kids, but, I, you know, they may not have the legal liability there, but, you know, is there something that they can do to assist us with this being an issue?
Yeah, I, I think so. And there've been ongoing discussions, and we talked about that yesterday. It, it sounds to me like the students are more afraid of repercussions from the university than they are from our police department, which is-
Absolutely.
But the issue is, is that we don't always know who those students are at 216 East Summerbell. They don't have a record of who, of their students are living at that location. So we, we, we've got some work to do. We need to, we need to do better. And I've specifically asked our code enforcement to keep a closer look on that street because we know there are recurring problems there.
There are five houses that are probably the most prolific, and it's easy to find them. Follow the beer cans. I mean, you can, and the one that's right across the street here, which they always go out that way to go party, to cut that road through the woods, and that whole thing is just strewn with trash. Every Saturday, solo cups, beer cans, everything else. And even when it gets cleaned up, the next week, it's right back. So-
Have we given any citation for fines?
Well, I, I actually want to ask that question is, on citations, you said that they go to the property owner?
Yes. It is a violation against the property, and we often don't know, we could send it to occupant at that address, but we don't know who is renting that house unless, unless the landlord has been generous enough to share that information with us, which is rare.
And that's because the trash is in the yard versus it's a criminal offense if they are actually seen littering, right? That's the difference between the, the trash being that private property issue versus a criminal issue of the littering, right?
And, and we, I want to say, there were years that we actually did trash patrol. Every day, every morning, we would, our officers would go out, and we did site on those for the very same thing. And I think over the years, we've kind of tweaked that and changed it because most everyone else, it's a civil offense. It's not a criminal. The actual act of littering is. So yes, and, and part of that issue that we had even then was you have the, the trash as an aftereffect where we didn't maybe see the party, and it's in between residents. And we just kind of, looks like it's yours, pick it up.
Yeah, and the worst part is that most of it is when they're leaving the party.
Right.
So you guys come and break up a party that they have, and everybody leaves their solo cups in their trash cans or their trash down the road and in that yard. And it just never gets cleaned up. Now, you ask about being on the property, but a great deal of this now is no longer on the property. It's on the street.
Yeah. And I mean, I think technically, we're not supposed to respond to public comments, right? But I can, right?
You can. Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, I know exactly what you're talking about. I actually walk in your neighborhood because I really like your neighborhood and I wish it was more family-friendly. Um, but, you know, we have the same problem in my neighborhood where a lot of the homes on Orange Drive have now become party houses as well. And, um, you know, I take my five-year-old out with our wagon, and we pick up litter. And I actually had a conversation today with the mayor of Burlington, and I talked about the litter. So it's just funny that you're bringing this up today because the amount of litter in our town, even when I'm out there picking it up and along my walking route, there's a lot. I mean, we really do have a lot of litter, um, along the sidewalks, along the roads. So, you know, it, it's a bigger issue, and certainly when you look at what is being littered, it certainly looks like it's coming from a certain demographic of people. I mean, when, when you look at what it is. And, you know, I think that, I know it's not your responsibility to talk to them, but one of the things that I can share from my own experience is that when my husband and I lived in Charlotte, there was only one rental in our whole neighborhood. It is not a neighborhood known as, known for rentals, and it was all college students. And my husband had dealt with this at the time for about three years. And it just drove him crazy. You know, he, he was just, you know, at his wits' end about it. And I said to him, and, you know, I can say this because he's my husband, we were dating at the time, and I said, "Well, have you ever had a conversation with them?" He was like, "Well, why would I have a conversation with them? No, I'm just going to call the police." And I said, "Well, you know, how can you have an expectation for someone that you've never shared with them?" And he said to me, "Well, I never thought about it like that." And granted, I'm not saying that to you. I said it to him. But I will tell you that after a long night of them having a party, I walked over there. I asked to come inside. I asked to sit down with them. And I had a long conversation with them about what my expectations were and what our neighbors' expectations were for them being a community member. They apologized, and the behavior changed tremendously.
You bring up, and, and I can tell you, you ask about neighborhood property. In the contiguous property, where everybody who borders on me, who is probably the closest offenders, I've had a conversation with them. So, yes, if there's an issue, I usually walk over, have a conversation with them. This is everywhere. This is all around the neighborhood. So it's not just, and the house, it's a party house. They're down the street a little bit from me. So, no, I don't feel like I have a right to go down there and say, "Hey, look, you're screwing up my neighborhood." So, yeah, I, I get what you're saying, and I'm not afraid to go talk.
But I, I feel like it is your right because it's your neighborhood. I think it's totally appropriate that if you wanted to have that conversation, you know, I don't feel it's inappropriate for me to walk in your neighborhood and knock on their door and say, "Hi, I'm Emily Sharp, and I live here." hi, I'm Emily Sharp, and I live here, and I would love for you to take better care of your property. You're a member of this community, and if you're, if you want to be a member of our community and a respected member of our community, then you need to make sure that you're giving that same respect.
Well, I've gotten that from the people who are, again, contiguous properties. So everybody who's within the neighborhood and I've had conversations with them, and I've gotten a lot of good responses from them. They change all the time.
Yeah.
And I don't feel like I have to chase the fish up the stream every time breeding season comes. I shouldn't have to do that. And it's by semester now, and it's even shorter, because they have these mini-mesters and things like that that overlap. And the bad part about it is, is that you get a foundation that starts. You have a group of kids who lived there one year, and they had some parties, and it was okay. They, they did okay, and they weren't bad. Then you get the next year, who's going to take it up one level, and then the next year, who's going to take it up the next level. So we're at the third year right now, and they're all breaking loose because it was COVID. So I understand where they're coming from, but at the same time. It's, it's a public respect thing, and the worst part is, is kids drive in to the parties, and then they get in their cars, and everything goes out the side of the car. And that's where a lot of it comes from, in, in the street, is they just go to get in their car. They don't want to have the beer in their car, so they drop it on the street. So it's kind of hard to catch them. I've talked to the people who sponsor the party, guys next door, they're great. Guys across the street, they're great. People behind me, I've talked to all of them. So I, I, I take your point, and I really appreciate that. I do. But I feel like I'm overstressing my bounds when I'm, you know, a couple houses away, and I'm looking on them because they're not my neighbors.
It's just my experience that relationships build community better than anything, and, you know, I think it's worth a try if you're willing to do it. If not, I'm willing to do it. I'd be happy to come by and knock on some doors. I don't mind doing that.
So one of the things we tried in the past.
Sure, no, Thursday.
One, one of the things we tried in the past was having a community sit down where the neighbors got and invited everybody in the neighborhood to come and have a cookout. And the university even sponsored it. They were great. We wanted to have an opportunity to talk to the kids and tell them what we expected out of their them living in the neighborhood. Well, we got like six kids out of probably fifty in the neighborhood that would have been moved there. They didn't really want to come and see us. They didn't think it was worth anything. So unless we go out and really force ourselves on them, I don't see that as being, and that's, that's what I've done. So, you know, when the kids, when I'm in the middle of a football game or basketball game in the middle of the afternoon, and I can hear the music from a block and a half away, I'm going to see them. I shouldn't have to. I should be able to call them and say, no, I shouldn't have to listen to the music inside my house. So there's times when I will talk to them and times when I'm beyond talking to them.
Mayor Tally, Jeff Stein from the university would like to address.
Excuse me?
Jeff Stein from the university. He is.
Dr. Stein, would you like to make any comments?
Well, I was just going to apologize to Mr. Gary and, and, you know, it's clearly, it's completely unacceptable. And I just wanted to share that I think, you know, between the uni, this is a long-term problem. Obviously, as Chief Blackwelder men, mentioned and, and has been mentioned, it's, it's long-term. And, you know, we're going to have to sit down and get creative, I think, between ordinances, enforcement, and involvement of the university landlords, the town administration, as well as the police, this can be tackled, but it, it, it's going to take some work and it has to be done.
Community wants to help you with that, so we want to help as well. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump him off. Can you put him back on?
I think he turned it off.
Once he starts speaking, he'll come back.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, we want to be part of it too. We want to help the solution. We don't want to be just the whiners and complainers. We want to be the ones who help resolve this.
We're obviously going to see it before we do in almost every instance. So what, what you did yesterday was you used our online submission form that goes directly to me and to our code enforcement officer. And we will monitor it more closely, but when we hear from you of a specific problem on, you know, a Friday night or whatever it might be, regarding the trash, then I will send her right out to, to respond to it.
Well, one of the things I'd like to be able to, and I haven't been able to do, is attach photos, because that's really photos and videos, because I can, I've got a camera setup. I mean, I can tell you the license plate of several of the people who pulled off and just threw their cans out in my yard and not in the yard. So I'm not going to be passive about this. I'm going to be active about protecting my property. But, and I want to be a participant in it.
Right, and I think it's a, it's a joint, as, that it's a joint endeavor.
Yes.
You know, I'd like to say that your neighborhood's the only one that has trash, and the fact of it, the matter is that, you know, our officers are, are also on the other side of town dealing with that. But working in conjunction with code enforcement and being proactive, seeing that, that there are cars out, seeing that there is trash, we have tools at our disposal as well to document that, to report it, be witness to, as law enforcement, to whatever code enforcement's working on. And I'll also say that just last week, um, working with Janet Lynn Patterson, Dean Patterson at the university, our department did some, what we call knock-in talks with some of the students that have been a little out of hand in trying to enforce some of our, our declaration, emergency declaration, and governor's orders. That being said, that's not the end of it. There was a couple students that we still needed to have conversations with that we could not pin down. So while we couldn't also address this and make a day of that as well, going out and scoping the trash and letting Dean Patterson have conversations with the students as well, apparently had a pretty decent impact. We'll see how the weekend goes. But the students seemed to be very responsive to her presence.
It just seems like, because I think we've talked about it, where it said that students are a little more afraid of the university's repercussions than, than ours. If we could, you know, work with the university, and if, you know, a, a house, a rental house gets X amount of citations, that the university can step in if it's documented on them for repercussions of sorts.
We were actually told that when we had the conversation, when we met with the university. So there were a number of people in the town, in my area, that met with the university and their administration and the police at the same time. And we had a great, great conversation. The university said that they would pass some penalties to people who are continuous offenders. Uh, I don't know that that's happened. I haven't seen any evidence of it, so.
I think, Mr. Gary, you're talking about the neighborhood coalition. Uh, and I know that John Dooley, uh, my colleague, Dr. Dooley, is on, is on the call. He's not a panelist, and I, I think he can talk about this. There were actually some actions taken and some penalties assessed pretty heavily against students. So if we, but, but it might be that we just need to take some time to get back to this neighborhood coalition. We, we've got to, you know, we've got to solve this problem together, and, and you're right. But there is a group that, that, that started meeting and had some good outcomes. And I will just say, Chief Blackwelder, the, I heard that you and Dean Patterson had at least one student in tears, so I think that was pretty effective.
That was all Dean Patterson.
I think the other thing, Kelly, that maybe we can do is, is get direct communication between police and code enforcement, so that when y'all see something, you know, she's, she's, she works twenty hours during daytime hours, but if y'all see something that needs to be followed up on the next day, we, we can get her out there the next day to, to follow up on it.
I guess one of the problems that we have with that is that, you know, when they have their parties Friday, Thursday night, we don't see anybody from Code Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so Monday, we finally see the person coming around, so, but then you're into the next week, and before anything really gets resolved. So we have a time lag with this. It's not something that's, you know, a resource that can be elicited on a, on call or on need basis.
Yes, that's, that's true, and she's, they're part-time. They're twenty hours a week is, is what they're budgeted for. And we recognize that there's a need for more, so we, we will delve into that subject also. And there's a lag time because of contacting the actual property owner and then getting resolution. You know, the solo cup sits on the yard while all this is happening, but we have the ability, and she has in some cases gone and knocked on the door and responded to whoever is there at the house at that time. It just doesn't quite have the same teeth as the landlord threatening eviction or something like that.
And that is one nice thing is, I know that the people around me have kind of built their contracts based on nuisance. So they know that if somebody creates a nuisance repeatedly at times, they can lose their residence.
We, we've actually, we actually suggested that to, we had landlord meetings here at the beginning of, of the fall semester for three years in a row, and they were very well-attended. And what was interesting about that is some of the landlords were giving tips to each other, and we just kind of stepped back and let, let that take place. But that was one of the suggestions, is, you know, build it into, into your lease agreement, so that you have some ability to, to respond.
The other piece is, I would really like to attend something like that, because if nothing else, we can tell you where the places are that it was successful and where it wasn't successful. So the landlords can get feedback right away on, well, you made a threat, but you didn't do anything about it.
Absolutely.
Pam, I'm happy to offer a comment or two if it would be helpful. I'm sorry. This is John Dooley. I'm the vice president for student life at Elon. Uh, Mr. Gary, I think I was at that meeting with you a couple summers ago. And, um, Mr. Gary is right that this is a pretty complex problem that's going to require some complex solutions. We've had a neighborhood coalition that has been meeting since that summer. Folks from the town, the police forces for both the university and the town, university officials, as well as students and neighbors. And, Mr. Gary, we'd love to, to have you be a part of that conversation if you'd like. I, I think your observation is right, that there are some things we can do with ordinances. Um, I know we had folks on that neighborhood coalition look into some of the ordinances of the cities that you described. Those around Wake Forest, other locations where they've successfully navigated these challenges, and I, so I think that there are some things we can do there. The university is committed to following up on any citation that we receive. If we, you know, get a citation from the town, as Chief Blackwelder knows, we follow up with conduct processes, and we've made very clear to our students that the conduct code applies off-campus as well as on-campus, and we will enforce that. Chief Blackwelder mentioned Dr. Patterson being out there last week doing some knock-in talks. Um, and some of the students in those situations are also going to have student conduct follow-up as well. So, you know, we're certainly, you know, reckon, and we, we believe that our students need to understand what it means to be a part of a community. Just as this university is part of the community, so are our students, and, and so we've got work to do there. You, we do have challenges in that we have some landlords that are local and, and are really responsive. We have landlords that own properties that are not local, and sometimes they're not as responsive. And so, you know, there's work that we can do with them as landlords, with code enforcement, with the students. You know, lots of things we're going to need to work on it, but it is not a, it's not an easy one-solution problem, as Mr. Gary notes.
I agree, and that's why I'm here. I want to see what can be done. It's not going to be just my community or my, my neighborhood. It's going to end up being a lot of neighborhoods, because unlike gentrification, we're moving populations out and new populations in, but we have to come to some standard where we can both coexist. And I don't want to be the grumpy old man living in the neighborhood. But I think that's how they look at me right now, and frankly, I don't care, but at the same time, I don't want to be the one who's just always complaining about it. I stand here because I know that my neighbors would not do this unless they were asked, and even then, almost coerced to come up here and say something.
Ma'am, I've got a question.
Yes.
You can issue a citation, and there can be a fine.
Yes.
How many times have we done that?
We do, we do it often.
When you say often?
And it's.
Once a month, twice a year?
No, I mean, they're, they're more frequent than that, and of course, they're all over town.
And then it's twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars in repeat offenses can be as much as a hundred. And I'm hearing Mr. Gary say that, that, that that's weak in comparison to other, other ordinances.
I would surely look into that.
Absolutely.
Well, you don't get anybody landlord's attention for twenty-five dollars.
And, and actually, out of all the cities that I looked at, and it can be confirmed, every one of them started at three hundred dollars. So it was, again, it was to get the landlord's attention. Three hundred dollars here and there once might not make a difference, but a couple times in a month or a semester made a big difference.
You wouldn't be surprised at the reaction we get for the twenty-five dollar ones from, from some landlords, particularly if they own multiple properties and are getting multiple citations. And, and yet, you know, they're, they're fully justified, and we, we have the, the photographs and other documentation to, to show them.
I would, working with our police captain, is to, I can identify where the houses are that are most concerned in my neighborhood. And it doesn't really change that much. As I said before, it's kind of generational. It's passed down, passed down, passed down. We had a party last, we had a party house last year. It wasn't real big. We're going to ramp it up a little bit this year, so you can see where the growth is, but I know which houses are. And I do want to say right now, thank you for everybody listening. I came here with a lot of frustration and a little bit of anger, because I really don't want to tolerate that in my neighborhood. And I appreciate you listening and being so kind as to hear me out.
If you would, uh, share that information with Chief Blackwelder, because maybe it's time for a different kind of letter to go to those repeat offender locations. You know, I'm happy to, to draft that and send it out.
Give you a GIS map with every one of them with little X over it.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I think you've got our attention. I appreciate it.
I appreciate that, and I'm, I.
I'll tell you what I'll start doing. I drive through Summerbell every now and then, but I'll make sure I do it a little bit more often.
You'll see it. I mean, right now, she saw the pictures, you saw the pictures, and that was just today. So that was from, not even, all from this weekend. So it, it goes on, and we know we have work to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, and I appreciate the long extended time. I was looking for three minutes.
You did. What a serious situation. We appreciate it. Are there any other citizens who would like to make any public comments about their wishes or concerns about that? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments section. Let's see, I think next on the agenda, the university update from Dr. Stein and, uh, I'll have the floor.
Thank you very much. Uh, I know, Mayor Tally, how you like long meetings, so I've prepared a couple hundred slides. No, I, I really appreciate you including me and my colleague, John Dooley, uh, on the agenda this evening to provide a couple of really quick updates. John, while you're here, do you just want to say a few words?
Yeah, I could say, um, my name's John Dooley. I'm the vice president for student life at Elon. I've been at the university for about seven years now. And, uh, Dr. Stein and I, along with our colleague Susan, have been meeting pretty regularly with Rich and Pam, um, and a meeting recently with Davis and Monty, which was very helpful. To give you a little bit of update on what we're working on here at the university. We didn't time it that Mr. Gary was going to be here today, but those are the kinds of things that we, we work on collectively with the town on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think that's a great example of how we can and should work together, and how our opportunities and challenges are also interwoven. I, you know, we, John mentioned this meeting that we meet every, he and I meet every Monday over Zoom with Rich and Pam, and based on the December, I think it was November, December board meeting, we decided to have a meeting that included Davis and Monty as well, and we added Susan Kirkland. And, you know, what we realized in that meeting is that there's been a lot of transition in the past few years, meaning new board members, new town manager and some town staff, a new president at the university and senior leaders. And that means this is probably a good time for us to pause and share some information, build relationships and communications. Now, Monty and I live across the street, so we talk every once in a while, and we're right down the street from, uh, Rich Rodner. We try to keep an eye on him, which is a big task, but there were many things that we talked about just in one meeting that we just didn't realize from the university perspective or the town perspective. And we're scheduled to follow up on that meeting on February twenty-second. So, uh, real quickly, I'm just going to show you a couple things that I've, you know, Rich and Pam suggested might be helpful. Can you see that screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, uh, John mentioned, uh, colleagues, you know, we are three folks that we want to make sure you always feel comfortable reaching out to, and I'm happy to give you John Dooley's cell phone number at any time. But, uh, you know, John obviously does a lot of things, but is working as the vice president of student life with every aspect of students' involvement at Elon. Susan Kirkland. Susan Kirkland is our interim CFO. Gerald Whittington's back on campus, which is great after being away for some medical issues. But Susan is the interim, and this is my 19th year at Elon. So I've served in a number of different capacities, chief of staff, but in a role where I, you know, work with local communities quite a bit. I wanted to give you a quick, really quick COVID update. Hopefully, you've seen that based on what we learned this fall, we've made some updates. The dashboard that I'm showing here is on the website. That's one place where we try to give current information that's updated at four o'clock every day. One of the things you see in the bottom left corner there is that we're trying to be very open and transparent about the testing that we're doing. So you'll see pretty public numbers there as well as quarantine and isolation numbers and Aliments County numbers as well. We've made some updates to the website, try to make that easier. Certainly updated the expectations we have for students in terms of COVID-19. But one of the biggest changes that we've made is adding more testing. I, I may have said to some of you, we, we were concerned in the fall, we could not get access to highly accurate, rapid, and affordable tests. That was a tool that we really lacked, and we searched for that. We have that tool now. So we have required all students at the beginning of January when they arrived and the beginning of February here as they arrive for spring term to test. We also tested all faculty and staff in those periods. We're now in a period since they arrived in January that we are testing every undergraduate student every week, and faculty, staff, and graduate students monthly. So you see that number as of five o'clock tonight. We were at just under 26,000 tests since the beginning of January. This is the positivity rate that we have thus far on these tests. This allows us obviously to identify cases faster and slow the spread. I, I will say, it's a little premature to be saying this publicly, but I reached out to Rich about 10 days ago to start a conversation, asking, you know, if we could consider if the university might possibly find a way in partnership with the town to offer free COVID testing to Town of Elon employees and perhaps downtown business owners who interact with students, faculty, and staff. Again, you know, very early on this front, but just, I wanted you to know that we're putting our heads together over the next few weeks to explore how we might do this throughout the spring a few times. So I certainly, you know, am happy to do other updates at other times. But before I finish tonight, I did want to mention that the fame that is involved with alderwoman Emily Sharp and Alderman Monty Allison. We really appreciate, this is a great example of this partnership of them coming to campus on Wednesday, March 24th. It'll be Zoom actually, but to participate in a civic engagement conversation. And I, I put the cultural calendar up here, so you all would have in your minds lots of events coming up. Obviously, most of them are virtual, but lots of events coming up this spring. And I'll just close, you may have questions, but I'll close where I started with a, a big thank you. We appreciate your ongoing partnership and support and being able to work together on a range of issues. We value the town and this relationship. We believe that our success is certainly tied together, and we hope that we can have some more conversations soon about what's the university's strategic plan, the town's strategic plan, our master plans. And I just thank you all and wish everybody a healthy and safe spring. We're back in session for spring semester. So quick update, happy to bring more topics in the future, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stein, and thank you, Mr. Dooley. We appreciate it, and we look forward to more interaction. Let's see, reports. Town managers report.
Mr. Mayor, really very minimal. We just, we want to wish Rich and Dory safe travels as they return from Pennsylvania. This evening, he is expected back in the office tomorrow. There, I did send January's monthly report to you by email yesterday, and happy to take any questions if those arise, just reach out to me. I do, at March's meeting, we've scheduled for the consultant on the Haggard Avenue corridor study to give a brief presentation. That report is out for public comment on our website. Kathleen posted it yesterday. I am offering, and what I'd like to do is give you printed copies of these so that you have, you, you can access it, of course, on our website, but if there are questions that come up, I don't want you to be trying to develop those on the fly. She's giving her presentation. This will give you an opportunity to, to take a look. It does not include the appendices, which were 80-plus pages. If you want, want to delve into that, please go to the website or reach out to me, and I'll get, get that to you. But we're excited about what we've seen here and what you'll see in March. The LDO update has been a bit of a challenging process. Our consultant has encountered some issues, and it has delayed the project. I have been working with him to get the project back on track, and he had sent me several days ago an adjusted schedule that would run through the end of April for getting all documents to me and the committee, the steering committee for review. And I had not had a chance to review that. Took me a couple of days to get to it. I sent that back, and he also had a very, I think, conciliatory letter that he wrote to the steering committee apologizing for the delays. So we released that, that got out to those folks, and we'll get that project back up and running so that we can wrap it up. And I think we might be on a similar schedule to the budget adoption, but we'll bring that to, to this board for review and comment before, and, and ask for your adoption of the, of the plan. And that's all I have, sir.
You want to go with the retreat?
Certainly. That retreat is scheduled for Friday. Just today, there was, I think, one additional revision, very small to the agenda. This is scheduled for generally a full day. The, this room is open to anyone that wants to join us in person. The facilitator will be joining us virtually. And the agenda, I think she would like to get, start off with your input on sort of big picture, what, what do you envision for the town? And make sure that she, she'll be here to basically facilitate the conversation, keep us on schedule, keep us on topic. And we've worked with her before, and she did a very, very nice job. Staff is meeting with Rich on Thursday to sort of have a pre-retreat meeting, and all the staff will be giving under 10-minute presentations on their goals for their departments as part of that agenda. And I'm happy to, to, to print those draft agendas for you or send those by email later this, this evening before I leave.
Starts at 8:00 AM?
I already done that. 8:30. It starts at 8:30, yes.
Time to get a coffee beforehand.
I sent you an email late this afternoon with the agenda attached as well as the whiteboard that she's, the mural board that she's going to be using. So you can go ahead and familiarize yourself with it. You have an option of not using it, but those that want to, you, you can go ahead and kind of work with it a little bit and get familiar with it.
Thank you, Diane.
Well, there are- We'll be here at Town Hall for the retreat. And hearing from all your emails, I think, Quinn, you had indicated that you might want to be here or you'd go Zoom. I invite you to be here if you want to. Monty, I think you said the same thing.
I'd like to be here.
You can be here. As you can see, we've got plenty of room.
Absolutely.
Any board members would like to be here. I think we've got room. And I think all of the staff who's going to make reports will probably do it from their office.
That's true.
If any of them would like to be here, I guess they could. We just need to look at the numbers and keep our distance and everything.
Yes, sir.
If we could rotate them in, that would be fabulous. If they're comfortable doing that, because I think, if, if you've ever been on a Zoom call for eight hours, you realize how disengaged you become. And I think being able to see someone speak, it would be helpful. We only meet once a year for the retreat, so I think it's important that we hear and understand what they're sharing. But that's up to them. I don't want anybody feeling uncomfortable.
I'll, I'll communicate that, too.
There's going to be a 10-minute report from them, but public works, they can be here, recreation parks, administration will probably be here all day.
Yes.
So I'm going to be here. If any of the board members would like to be here, that would be fine. We'll just see how it works. Anything else?
No, sir. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Comments from board members? Mr. Green?
Again, condolences to Rich and Dory. Safe travels back. Comment, again, I think it's a great idea to recognize our employees. The last couple of, a few meetings ago had Chief Blackwelder did that, and I think that's great. Any of our departments, I think that's really good to be, for them to be recognized for their hard work. Also glad to hear the progress is going with the university and, and the talks there, and I'm very encouraged in hearing that from, from Dr. Stein. So that's great news, and we keep on, keep that dialogue going.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I, I agree exactly. It's my same sentiments to Dory and, and Rich and the loss of your mother-in-law and mother. And I do, I, I would say, I think, and Davis probably will concur, I think our meeting with, with the university was a, was a productive one. I think we went into that meeting, and Pam was there as well, thinking it was focused on one thing. It really was more of a, you know, how do we come to the table and work together and be more transparent and being open and sharing our vision and their vision and expectations? And I think, hopefully, that's going to lead to more dialogue, because I think as, as we've learned over the years, and, and, and Mark, you, and you and Mayor have been on the board longer than I have, but I think that's been lacking. And I think we see there's a tremendous need to, to make them as part of a community and, and, and being communicated with them. Another thing is I want to tell Park and Recreation, I, I had the opportunity to go out to Slade Park with my granddaughter, and it's, it's amazing that it's underused, it's a fabulous property, and we do, we don't do it justice, we don't promote it as much as we do Beth Smith Park. And I'd like to see us try to figure out how to do that. It, for, for people of all ages, there's opportunities to do things. And I think, yeah, it's just a matter of letting people know what's out there and how to get there. That's, that's my view.
Mr. Sharp?
Of course, our sympathies to not just the Rodner family, but also the Montgomery family, as we received that email from Davis as well. Lila Kate Sharp would be very upset if we promoted her private park too much.
Well, that's what I was-
So she thinks, she calls that her park. But you're right. I mean, I, I tell so many people about Slade Park, and they're like, what park? And I'm like, it's like the hidden gem, you know? And, you know, there's so few people there, and when you go to Beth Smith, which is a great park, it's packed with people, and you can have a private park. So definitely love Slade Park and the new musical instruments as well. One thing that we were discussing, I think this was kind of in the transition between Mr. White and Mr. Rodner, was increasing the hours of code enforcement. Actually, I think maybe you and I, Pam, even spoke about that at one point, that you thought that maybe we needed to look at increasing those. Is that still something that, I mean, it probably just fell to the back burner when a pandemic took over all of our lives, but is it still something that you feel like is a need, or, you know, where, where do we stand on that?
I, I do. They, when I first started here, they were working 12 hours a week, and we increased them to 20, and I think I had asked for 24, and it got whittled down, as, as budgets sometimes do. I think there is a need for more, and, and they do a very good job. The unfortunate part of this, and I didn't want to, you know, overcomplicate it with, with all the factors that they encounter, but there is so much paperwork that goes along with what Kristen does. And, and so unfortunately, she's not out monitoring properties as much as she, as she might otherwise. So I do intend to request for more hours in the upcoming budget, so for the, for the, for the next budget year. I do think they've made a lot of headway, and I, I do think we see improvements. And unfortunately, we just don't hit every nail on, on the head every single time. But with more, more time spent, I think we could. Thank you for bringing that up.
That was all that I had.
Mr. Ray?
I'll make it quick for you. I, I don't have much, but again, my sympathies to the Rodner family and then to Davis's father-in-law passing, sympathies to them. As far, I mean, Mr. Gary was pretty passionate coming in here. As, as far as that goes, you know, me personally, I, I'll go down tomorrow and go pick up this trash, and then we'll see where we go, go from there. Thanks, Mr. Randall, Thursday. I do appreciate you, Monty, being on the committee with Davis, with the university. I, I definitely feel, I mean, we all spoke, I think, with the facilitator of our retreat, and I might have been the last one, but she said, you know, we all brought up, you know, university and town, and so, you know, I really appreciate Mr. Stein and, or Dr. Stein and Dr. Dooley being on the, the call today and their input. I look forward to the retreat, you know? I did put on the, in my email that I can be here or, or on Zoom, whenever we feel the best. Me personally, I, I know, like, in person, I, I kind of work a little better, but, you know, I also understand the, the fear of COVID and doing stuff. So I think this was a productive meeting. It was a longer meeting, but it was just one meeting a month that, that we had. So hopefully, we can move forward and get some stuff done ready for the upcoming year with some goals, and we all speak and make things happen at the retreat.
Thank you. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank everybody for their kind words. I, I appreciate that very much. Nice of you folks to have your thoughts and prayers with us. Dubtailing a little bit on what Emily said. Pam, if we've got the code enforcement up to 20 hours, and that includes their paperwork, maybe we can structure it so we have X number of hours that are in the field and X number of hours that will be just for doing the paperwork. If we could maybe get that sort of an arrangement, we know that they're in town and, and doing their patrols for at least a certain number of hours each week. So I also like what the board did tonight with a short-term and a long-term solution. Let's go out there and take a look at riding by there a little more frequently, but let's also take a look at the ordinances and say, it's, to the mayor's point, some of these things really have to get somebody's attention in order to be effective, and $20 probably isn't going to make that happen too awfully well. Just like the rest of the folks have said, I really appreciate Dr. Stein and, and John being here with us tonight, and devoting that time is important for us to know what goes on at the university, and it's important for them to know what goes on with us. And then lastly, it's my apologies for not being able to join you tonight and not being able to join you on Friday. I misspoke. If I'm able to get a test, I can come back into meetings within, I think it's seven days. But then we just got signed up for the vaccination tomorrow. So I guess I'm out of, out of the works for whatever it is, 14 days after I have that done. So despite my best efforts, sometimes things are just kind of getting in the way. But thank you, folks, for everything you do for the town and for the time that you commit. It's apparent, as you hear Quinn make the offer to go out and pick up trash, you hear Monty's involvement with the university and others, you hear Emily's involvement in her walking through the neighborhoods. The mayor's keeping track of Twin Lakes, and Mark's got his neighborhood down pat. I'm, I guess I'm the only one that's lacking. Thank you, folks.
And I'd remind, if you want to be at the retreat here, we need to let them know. Like I say, I'll be here. Quinn, what do you think?
Yeah, I'll, I'll more than likely be here.
I'll be here. Emily, you go Zoom, you do Zoom all the time.
I'm undecided. I mean, I would love to be in person, but I'd also like to take my mask off and, you know, chill. Not have to sit with a mask on all day in a room.
Mark, whatever.
I mean, I can, I can come, that's fine.
Whatever you want.
Yeah. I mean, I, I planned on the Zoom based on the email, but I mean, we can, I don't-
Yeah.
I can set it up for however many- I can set it up for however many and make sure that you-
I can either way. I'm flexible. I'm flexible.
Just let me know, and then, no.
Need a Zoom.
Well, you have to Zoom anyway, right? Because of Davis.
Yes. Oh, that's going to happen regardless. And the facilitator. And the facilitator, yeah.
And the staff, so.
Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.
Thank you, folks.